Okay, welcome everybody to the Town Board Work Session of Tuesday, December 17, 2019. So, we will, should we continue the public hearing or no? We might as well continue the public hearing.
Not yet. Why don't we go through the rest of the agenda first and then we can come back to the public hearing.
Got it. Okay, so this is a work session, by the way. So Joe, you want to lead us in the work session?
Right, so the first thing on the agenda is the GPS tracking agreement. So, the town has a GPS tracking agreement for all of the DPW trucks. It initially started because we didn't have, there are sections of town that have spotty cell service, as you guys are aware, and heaven forbid, one of our plow drivers gets into an accident and they're in one of those dead zones, they would be there for a long time without someone telling them for help. So, we're actually able to track the movement of our snow trucks and make sure that if there's a truck that's stalled for a new long period of time, we're able to figure that out. If we can't reach the driveway, we send somebody out there. And it's worked really well. And we've expanded it to basically our entire fleet. Police cars, town hall cars, and also GPS. So, this is just our annual renewal. And so, I'm going to be asking the board to renew that tonight. The other thing is, is that the board had asked about a GPS system for the shuttle.
Yeah.
And that's something that actually we're having some success finding. And so, we would look to do it with the electric shuttle when that comes into service. And it's an, it may be an initial outlay of perhaps a couple thousand dollars and then there's just a hundred dollar monthly fee afterwards. Some of them are a little on the expensive side, so that there's a public face to it. This is what I've been told.
You can't add it on to our current contract?
No, because ours doesn't, ours is called Silent Passenger and it actually gives people access to the entire fleet as opposed to one particular truck. So, right now, that's down at DPW. We would have like a public face to it. But, we're investigating it and I'm hoping that by our first meeting in January, that I will have something to report and have a proposal to the board, be able to explain to them how that's going to work. But, we have had some success in identifying some programs and we're just investigating them and seeing whether or not some other municipalities have the same sort of thing, smaller scale. Like, New York City's got it and some of the large ones.
It just strikes me that it would really lend itself well to doing some sort of like app building competition for like high school students or something to be, if we can provide them with the data about where the shuttle is located if they want to build the front, you know, build the actual app itself. That's a good idea.
Something to look into as opposed to paying a developer to build the app for us.
Or just use their cookie cutter.
Yeah.
Okay, great. App building, I like that.
Rob, want to sort of committee for that?
Mm-hmm.
Last one?
Mound.
Maybe a lot to the competition.
No, thanks.
The next is payment of claims. And the one after that is, we're going to be requesting that the board approve UMR and MVP rates for 2020. This is our healthcare. We offer two different health options to our staff. One is an HMO, the other one is a PPO. And then, we're ready to go into proposed actions.
Resolutions.
Hey, you need to read it because I left my glasses at home.
Oh, my pleasure.
Let's disarm.
I move to approve the payment of claims in the amount of eight hundred thirty-one thousand, thirty-two dollars, forty-three cents. Listen to the summary pre-check writing report, detailed after detailed report, each prepared on December 17th, in the last year of our great supervisor, Robert Greenstein, 2019. Checks will be issued and mailed to each claimant listed on Wednesday, December 18th of this great year.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to approve the following premium rates for 2020 UMR Mebco Health Plan effective January 1st, 2020 through December 31st, 2020, which represents a 3.01 increase over the 2019 rates as reflected below.
Perfect.
Second.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve the following premium rates for the term February 1, 2020 through January 31, 2021, with MVP Healthcare Inc., the town's HMO provider. The 2020 rates represent a 5.25% increase over 2019 rates as set forth in the resolution.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are we doing this one now?
No.
Number four, we can do, if you'd like, I can summarize this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's extension.
So, resolution number four before the board, is a resolution approving a request for an extension of the MFPD. It's really a ministerial matter. The Town Board previously, going back to 2011, approved a multifamily plan development, preliminary development concept plan, a conceptual plan showing the layouts of buildings in the East Build Residential portion of the Chapakua Crossing project. After the PDCP is approved, they're required to get site plan approval before they could do any actual construction. They're still at the MFPD stage. However, the MFPD approval from the Town Board is only valid for six months. The applicant had traditionally come in here and obtained six month extensions. They were granted because they were continually and diligently pursuing those approvals. However, the last approval expired in 2018, June of 18, and they needed to get extensions and approved oversight, they were not obtained. So, this resolution before the board will grant extensions to bring it up to currently to expire in December of this year and then grant one further six month extension so that now the MFPD approval would expire in, from December 6, 2019 to June 6 of 2020. And so, this resolution merely grants some, what I'm calling non-pro-tunk correction prior MFPD approvals that were not applied for timely but are now able to be granted and then extends the approval up until June 6 of 2020 on condition that they continue to work towards obtaining site plan approval.
And at this point, do we believe that they're on a path to get site plan approval by June of 2020?
If the Town Board takes action tonight and approves the modifications and given the work they've been doing over in the spring, the summer, and this fall, my discussions with staff, yes, it would, it is achievable to have it done by June of next year.
So, there's no reason to try to extend beyond June of 2020?
No, not at this, no.
Not at it.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the issuance of a 100.
We're holding off on five.
No, I don't want to. So, we're doing number six?
Number six.
And we're holding number seven.
Okay. We're doing number six.
Okay.
I move to adopt the following resolution. Whereas, the Town Board previously accepted the offer of dedication of certain land adjacent to 69 Crest Road in Chapakua, but a deed to such land was not recorded and the current property owner disputes the town's right to ownership and use of such land. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Newcastle hereby authorizes the town attorney to initiate legal proceedings, including but not limited to, an action to quiet title to said land previously offered for and accepted for dedication adjacent to the property located at 69 Crest Road.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm, we're doing seven?
Eight.
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 No. Eight is, eight is being held to after the public hearing.
Yep, not doing eight?
Not doing seven?
We're not doing seven?
Seven's a vacation date. You didn't discuss that.
We didn't discuss it in executive session.
So, the next will be number nine.
Okay.
You're reading this, Jeremy just got your name.
I've moved to authorize entering into a three-year agreement with the Vehicle Tracking Solutions of Comac, New York, at the rate of $26 per unit for a total of 37 units effective January 2020 through December 2023.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to adopt the following resolution to extend for six months moratorium imposed by local law 13 of 2018. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Town Board hereby fines extended moratorium allowed the town to continue to maintain the status quo to effectively protect, effectively protect the public interest and welfare and ensure consistency with an adopted zoning requirement. And be further resolved, the Town Board hereby extends for additional six months the moratorium contained in local law 13 of 2018 with respect to the review and approval of certain land use, variance, building permit, and signed permit applications on certain properties within the retail business and retail business and parking districts in the Chapakua Hamlet in the Town of Newcastle.
Second.
And I would just note that the Town Board received tonight a memorandum from the Planning Board confirming that they completed the review of the local law and that they endorse its adoption as the county planning board had done as well. Thank you.
Lisa seconded it?
Yes.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm doing this one. I move to enter into an agreement for one year executed on July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, between the Town of Newcastle Police Department and Triad Group LLC for 207C Administration and a Form Satisfactory to Counsel at the cost of $275 for initial evaluation per case and then $150 per month thereafter per case on an as-needed basis as directed by the town, as well as standalone retirement applications at the cost of $4,500.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, now we have to press pause? So, now you can open up, I would suggest, open up a public hearing, see if there's any comments from the public and after then, I can then go through and explain the documents that is before the board for consideration tonight. We cannot close the public hearing until the Planning Board delivers its referral recommendation, which I understand they're working on now.
Okay.
Let me know, let me tell them that they're.
They're aware.
Okay. So, motion to open the public hearing, continue the public hearing.
Second.
Well, in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we are continuing the public hearing from last.
Perfect timing.
It is.
I feel like it's like a transplant operation.
It's a lot, that's a big crew of people coming out.
Hope they all sit on your.
Okay, so, did we open the hearing? Do we have a second?
Yes.
Well, in favor, okay, great. Should we have a summary? This is a continuation from last week? Any?
No. I mean, this is, we're available for, to open for public comment. This is a public hearing on the petition of SG for certain modifications that I'll explain to in more detail in a moment, but I believe the public is familiar with as it's the third or fourth public hearing that this board has had. We've also discussed it at work sessions and in joint meetings with the boards.
Right. Any public comment? Greg?
I'm not quite sure where we are.
So, the board has before it some resolutions to consider, but it first needs to hear from the public during the public hearing. And so, if there are any comments the public wishes to make at this time, now would be that time before the hearing is closed. And we have your comments or your, we have your comments, your written comments from earlier and.
You have before you the resolution, which I have reviewed and with the building inspector. I will state frankly that I'm disappointed that Toll Brothers finds it impossible to reuse the interior spaces of the house as is, but a number of conditions have been introduced into the resolution that will reduce what we consider to be still a considerable risk to the, to the house as a whole by the reconstruction of the inside. So, we do not oppose the resolution. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Hello.
Hi, Phil Pierce. I have some new ideas, so trying not to repeat myself. So, the first thing is, I was just in the Planning Board hearing this evening before this meeting and it was not a public hearing and there was a discussion about whether there was, the driveway length of 15 versus 20 was appropriate and they're wavering on it and so, they basically said, let's, let's kick it upstairs to the Town Board. So, the Town Board really needs to decide that a 15-foot driveway is not going to fit anybody's car. And so, the Planning Board is not doing, making a recommendation that is really feasible with respect to traditional neighborhood zoning. The second thing is that there was, I was taking a look at the 2012 settlement of litigation and it's not clear to me whether the general releases that were set forth as exhibits to the December 11, 2012 settlement agreement have been signed and whether the adoption of the MFPD plan amendments today will resolve finally all litigation and all potential claims under the two different claims that were filed against the town and which were supposedly settled, subject to subsequent conditions.
It was signed, it was settled.
So, so the settlement is final and so, the question I have is, is there any resolution that might say that the petitioner has represented that it has no right further to seek any remedy against the Town of Newcastle or its representatives or officers for any failure by the present amendment to the zoning code to satisfy any of the demands sought in the cited litigation or otherwise to obtain further rezoning of the approximately 114-acre former Rita sites as property designated as tax map 93-9, .9-1-1 on the town's official assessment map. And further resolved that the, in adopting the adoption of the amendments, the town's relying upon the fact that this has been settled and that there's no further claims subject to any rezoning petitions, civil rights litigation, or takings litigation. So.
Nick?
The general release was self-executing, has been signed and so, all those claims have been resolved. As to any other claims that could have arisen since that time, not aware of any and there's nothing that, that addresses that nor would be appropriate in a land use resolution there so, by somebody would be abrogating their rights in this matter. We're comfortable that all the prior claims that have been raised have been resolved through the litigation and can no longer be asserted.
So, the question, so basically, there's no, my, my feeling is that given the history of litigation, as a precaution, it would be advisable for the town to get a general release and to have a general release to say, look, we're not fighting anymore, but we don't want to hear about it anymore either.
There's nothing to settle right now.
Right, the town has obtained whatever releases it had the right to do so pursuant to the aforementioned litigation. As far as processing the land use application, the town wouldn't have the right nor would it be typical to get a general release as an agreement to process and approve a land use application. Couldn't do that. We're comfortable.
So, the, one of the issues that troubles me is that there's, this applicant has been nibbling and nibbling and nibbling and so, one of the things I want to stop is I want to stop the nibbling on the additional requests for additional intensity of use. So, my feeling is that there's, given the history of the adoption of the plan as a condition of the settlement, it's a further extension of the settlement agreement, a further interpretation of the existing settlement.
So, the nibbling you refer to is the right under the land use laws to come back and ask for modifications and then the board's determined if it's appropriate. Any, and we wouldn't get a release that prevents them from exercising the rights that they have under the zoning ordinance. Okay, thank you.
Any other public comment?
Can I just speak to the issue about the driveway length for a second? Because it is addressed in the amendment to the finding statement and one of the things that we found when we looked into this issue, and I'm looking at page 19, which is in the section about traffic, transportation, and parking, and one of the things that we found when we looked into this issue about whether to extend from, from the first 15 feet to longer, is that if you extend it only from 15 feet to 20 feet, the aprons then would be more likely to have cars parked in them, which would actually reduce the visibility in the sightlines and cause, would, would be more likely to cause problems for people sort of entering and exiting their driveways there. So, it, we believe that it's actually safer to have the 15-foot aprons, is my opinion now. I shouldn't speak for everyone. In my opinion, it's actually safer to have the 15-foot, but have the requirement built into the Homeowners Association rules that states that no one park in those aprons as opposed to a slightly longer driveway, which would then cut off the sightlines for people exiting and entering their, their garages. I don't know if others agree with that comment, but that's my opinion.
Sabrina indicates she'll be in shortly with the Planning Board's memo and she can also answer any questions the board has on that specific question.
I was a few, I'm sort of curious why the Planning Board would punt on that. No, no, we have to hear from them, let's hear what they say.
You want to go through? I do, if there are no other comments from the public, why don't I then sort of provide an overview and let me know if you have any questions. So, the actions before the board tonight are really three components and again, SG submitted a petition and that petition seeks a number of amendments that I'll go into in a moment in detail. The three actions are, under the State Environment Quality Review Act, you're required to determine if the action before you will have any significant adverse environmental impacts. So, as this board has done in the past, as the lead agency, needs to make what are called findings. And so, you will be amending the prior finding statements to update it with respect to the changes that are being requested by the applicant. The second item before this board is to adopt a local law that will do two things and I'll explain in detail in a moment, make text changes to the town zoning code and also provide zoning amendments to the map, remapping the two zoning districts. The third item that will be discussed by the board tonight and voted on is modifications to the MFPD, the multifamily plan development, PDCP, the preliminary development concept plan, as well as, because we need more acronyms, the OPRPO, the Office Park Retail Overlay District, PDCP. In essence, for residential and retail PDCPs, there are modifications to those. So, that's the third topic that will be voted on. With respect to SECR, the Town Board and with the assistance of staff and the Planning Board have examined what are the potential adverse environmental impacts. Again, remapping doesn't have that, the zoning text changes isn't allowing new construction. It's really the issues that have been spoken about on the loop road, the basements, the addition of nine bedrooms, how does that impact utilities, how does that impact schoolchildren, how does that impact the historical and ecological aspects? So, the board has before it and it's been posted to the town's website and copies available, a 22-page amendment to the finding statement that goes through the various topics that are outlined in the prior finding statements. There's over 10 different areas. Land use and zoning, social, economic, and fiscal conditions, land, water, communities, facilities, and it goes through and identifies what are the potential impacts and makes a determination that there are not any significant adverse environmental impacts that have not been previously studied or examined. So, there are no new adverse environmental, significant adverse environmental impacts coming out of this particular action. The finding statement also requires that all the conditions, and there were a fair number of them, that were adopted in the prior finding statements, 2011, 2013, and then the five amendments, all still need to be complied with unless they are modified herein. So, there were a variety of findings that spoke about construction, mitigation during construction, noise impacts, lighting, those are all still here, they're just not addressed by this particular impact, but they're still of binding force. The second action is the local law. Local law is in the packet and there are some text changes. Let me give you a brief discussion of that, I'll try not to bore anyone. The first amendment is to the district regulations, this is in what's called the BRO 20 district, so it's to eliminate bulk and dimensional requirements for property on which an existing building is adaptively reused for residential use. So, the 200 building, the Kupula building, was not initially proposed to be used for residential purposes. Town Board then authorized it to be used for residential purposes. There are what are called dimensional requirements. How far back is the building set back? How tall can it be? Bulk and dimensional requirements. Because the Kupula building, has a building next to it, it's, it's going to become its own separate subdivided parcel, zoning code needs to be amended to reflect that it doesn't have those traditional setbacks. You're adaptively reusing this building, so it's not going to be set X number of feet away from the building or X number of feet from the park because it's an existing building that's being repurposed for a residential use. And so, these amendments recognize that solely with respect to, in this district, only a building is being adaptively reused for residential purposes, the bulk and dimensional requirements don't, don't comply. And again, it's an existing building, would not apply to new construction, so it's fairly narrow in its amendment. Another amendment is to the zoning map. So, there were some changes made to the MFPD zone and the PDCP zone to reflect parking and some of the, to accommodate the auditorium that is within the MFPD. There are some changes to the boundary lines of the auditorium parcel, which will become its own separate subdivided parcel. And therefore, there then changes to those two zonings and how they're reflected on the zoning map. Not allowing any new construction that wasn't previously permitted, it's just making sure that all the buildings on the parcel are within the appropriate zoning district. I should take a little break here and mention that this is just really still the, Felix will close this later for a moment, but still the beginning stages of this process. There still needs to be site plan review and subdivision review before the Planning Board. This will be the last step for the Town Board with respect to this project, but it will, approval of the PDCP, approval of these zoning amendments allows the project to continue and proceed before the Planning Board with the first step being obtaining subdivision approval so that the auditorium is its own parcel, the Kupula building is its own parcel of land, the retail is its own parcel, and then there's going to be, what is it, 91 or 92 separate subdivisions for the, for the town owns. Another amendment is to the office park regulation to collude the floor area of the affordable units from the 500,000 square foot of non-overlay floor, meaning that in the retail district, there was a limit on how much of the office space could be used when the affordable units were placed into the Kupula building, Kupula buildings in the retail district, that space needed to be taken out from the, from the 500,000. This recognizes that. There's also an amendment to the MFPD zoning map to respect the auditorium boundary lines, which is also, so that's basically, I'm sorry, a summary of the local law that is before the Town Board with respect to amendments to the zoning text and the zoning map. As I said, really administrative, not allowing any construction that wasn't previously permitted by the board, it's just making everything work now on this project to reflect what has occurred out in the field and some of the changes to the project. Additionally, I mentioned there are two PDCPs that are being modified, the Preliminary Development Concept Plan. For the retail PDCP, it's really more of a technical amendment with respect to clarifying boundary lines again as a result of making sure the parking is within the retail district and that the boundary lines for the auditorium, the chat pack property has changed. The changes to the MFPD, the residential PDCP are different, they're not technical. They are related to the length of driveways, the width of roadways, the alignment of a roof road, and it allows also increases to the size of the dwelling units and increase in the number of bedrooms and also allows basements to be permitted. Basements weren't previously addressed, one way or the other, in the finding statement. Not typical that it would be, that's really a site plan issue. In this case, given the number of units and giving the amount of fill was coming out, that was examined as part of the finding statement and that's where that issue is going to be addressed. There was also the, one of the changes to the zoning text was to allow in the MFPD district a publicly-owned community facility so that the chat pack becomes a permitted use in that district. Additional change in the finding statement or discussion in the finding statement is the guesthouse, Reader's Digest guesthouse. The initial petition by the applicant, in paragraph 28 of its petition, requested that the guesthouse be demolished. There was discussions and public comments and joint planning board meeting, the board was not in favor of that, the applicant heard that and they withdrew that request, but as a result of those discussions, there was a greater understanding of the applicant's plan for the adaptive reuse of the guesthouse. The adaptive reuse of the guesthouse was a condition of the 2011 finding statements and every other finding statements and amendments and MFPD/DCP approval at that time, that the guesthouse be adaptively reused. But, this discussion led to more understanding of how it was going to be reused and there was a concern just to make sure that what the applicant had agreed to and what the boards, Town Board, Planning Board, and the public had envisioned would occur with respect to the guesthouse actually would be implemented and accomplished. So, that's an overview of the action that's before you. What I also have before you is a draft resolution that would approve the aforementioned Sixth Amendment to the Finding Statements, the local law, and the two PDCPs, the retail and the residential. And let me just go through, I'd say briefly, but I've spoken a lot already, so perhaps not as long as I've spoken. There's a couple of whereas clauses that set forth the procedural history and how we got to where we are, recognizes that the petition was received, there were a number of hearings held, it was referred to the county, the county said that it had no comment and that it had previously commented. The Planning Board has reviewed it a couple of their meetings and will be providing us with their comment letter. And then, it grants a couple of conditions. If the petition is granted, as reflected in the resolution. So, the first condition is requiring that the, and I'm just going to summarize this, so this is not a full recitation, it is in the document that's available to the public and I believe. It is in the document that's available to the public, and I believe in the back of the room also. So the first condition says, as an interim measure, to ensure that the guesthouse does not further deteriorate, within 30 days of the adoption of this resolution, the applicant shall meet and confer with the town building inspector and the building inspector, so thereafter provide a punch list. The purpose of a punch list is to identify and have the applicant correct any conditions like a leaking roof that would cause the building to further deteriorate. And also requires that, then they'll implement that punch list. Also provides in condition two that the building inspector and the applicant shall confer and inspect the guesthouse every three months to make sure that it's not going to be deteriorating, that it hasn't been some other damage. Building inspector also has a right to go in there at times that he deems appropriate and necessary. Additionally, in paragraph three, that within 60 days of adoption of this resolution, the applicant shall meet and confer with the town historian and town building inspector to identify any interior materials in the guesthouse that would otherwise be discarded and see if they can be repurposed or salvaged or made available for public display purposes by the town. And again, relying here, because it's interior, I'm cooperating with the applicant, as they've done in other aspects of this project, to remove in good faith such materials without damaging them and making them available to the town. Now, with respect to the guesthouse during site plan review, remember this plan now goes to the planning board for site plan review. This resolution requires that the planning board shall, one, require the applicant to provide a detailed plan for the alteration and reconstruction of the interior without adversely impacting the exterior prepared by a licensed architect with experience and expertise in the field of historic preservation. In essence, we want to make sure that the preservation of the building can actually accomplish the goal, which is to make sure it remains there and is adaptively reused. We're not regulating what they do with the interior. That's beyond the purview, and legally, we're not allowed to do so. But we can make sure that whatever they do to the interior doesn't result in what we don't want to occur, the demolition or the building collapsing. Also, the planning board shall recognize that the pillar front portico of the guesthouse is an integral part that must be preserved in connection with the adaptive reuse. May recall there was some discussion on that issue. And that, to the greatest extent possible, that any exterior restoration work, if you will, respect the original design to the greatest extent possible. So all that will be discussed at the site plan level where it's appropriate, where you've had those detailed discussions, and not at the concept plan level, which is before the town board. Condition five talks about the loop road. You may recall there was an alternative that would have filled in the loop road, taking the material from the basements. There's also an alternative that would leave it as it was presently proposed. The finding statement with the assistance of staff and reviewed by this board goes through and describes what those potential impacts would be, the pros and cons, and evaluates and reaches a conclusion that neither one would have a significant adverse environmental impact, and recognizing that something like the elevation change of a road is a traditional site plan consideration, looking at retaining walls and trees that might come down, how you would might mitigate a retaining wall with respect to its view shed. Those are details left to the planning board, traditional site plan reviews, and so it's going to be left to the planning board to determine whether they should go with alternative A or B. Item six recognizes the Wallace Auditorium, and that with respect to the design work and the MFPD work and the use in the retail, that there are certain improvements that need to be undertaken to improve sight and pedestrian access by eliminating the existing berm. There'd be a number of discussions over the months about the berm and that impact, and also making sure that there's a crosswalk and safe pedestrian connection added to the chat pack. And that the planning board shall determine the timing and phasing of those improvements. We want to make sure they get done, they get done in a manner that doesn't interfere with the use of the chat pack, and that's going to be reviewed and discussed at the site plan stage by the planning board. Condition seven talks about the Annandale Road connecting trail to the crosswalk across Route 117 where there's a crosswalk with a light. And so the town board, the planning board and staff, will work with the residents to identify whether it's feasible. The applicants agreed to stake the property line, so that then various points of the trail can be marked off of the property line, so the neighbors know how that would impact their property and how much of the trail would be required to be on their property. The town in this resolution is agreeing to maintain that trail should be constructed. The SG, the applicant is not responsible for the payment of any easements, and we understand the neighbors would be giving easements to the town for these and the wouldn't be payment. And this sets forth the process by which we make sure that that process continues, and there's a discussion that the town board's kept involved in the review and processing of the Annandale pathway, if you will. There's also in paragraph eight, just to memorialize, that the applicant recommended and agreed that the applicant shall record a deed restriction and establish a homeowner association regulation prohibiting the conversion of basement space in the town homes into bedroom. And that would be enforced by the HOA, not the town.
I just want to mention, we've discussed a couple of times about home offices that were raised, issues raised by some people. There would be permissible home office use there, however, should it, if and when it became an issue, the town could always enact legislation, and the homeowners association could restrict if they were inclined to do so.
That's right. The homeowners can have, the HOA in its declaration can have restrictions as to the use of a property that's privately enforced. Current zoning would permit in the BRO 20 MFPD overlay district, a home office use subject to the regulations of the town, and those regulations can be changed uniformly to all home office uses or specifically to the MFPD district, taking into account the uniqueness of that property. So if it becomes a concern later on with respect to intense use or it's just not equivalent with the character of that community, the board has the ability to react to concerns of residents at that time.
Nick, I don't know if this is the right place to mention this, but since we're starting to talk about homeowner association regulations, Mr. Beers had spoken at one of our earlier public hearings, and we took it up last week in our work session, with regard to his recommendation that we have some sort of regulation around not being able to sell your on-street parking spots as homeowners there. Is it possible to add a condition that there would be homeowner's association regulations around that?
So that concern that the HOA would sell the, if the street parking would be a private road owned by the residents, by the HOA?
Right. The town homes themselves don't have claim to-
Correct.
-the public parking on the site. They don't have specific, other than what's in their driveway and their garage, they don't have claim to particular spots.
It depends what's in the declaration, if there are dedicated, and I don't know enough about, or if they even thought about that, and that would be more of a site plan consideration.
Nothing dedicated.
Okay. Right, but if there's set aside, if you will, visitor parking spaces or private or residence parking spaces on the road outside of the driveway?
There's nothing dedicated. These are open spaces that are to be utilized, and it satisfies the zoning requirement, and it satisfies, there's no, there's nothing dedicated.
There's no residence parking spaces. Okay.
Yeah, there was no contemplation of assigning on-street parking to specific-
And the HOA would own those spaces?
Correct. Maybe common space.
Right. So, and the HOA, I don't believe, I'm not going to speak for the applicant, would be in a position to sell spaces to private individuals at the detriment of homeowners who would have a right through that declaration offering plan to use those spaces?
It would be in violation of your zoning code.
Right.
Because they have to be used for zoning for those particular-
You have something you'd like to say?
Yes, I have some, no, we're having this colloquy, and I'm not part of it. So I have some comments on the parking spots. The request that I had was that you not be able, the town code now permits me as a homeowner to rent a spot on my property to someone who wants to park their car there. And that's what I'm requesting be denied, because you've gotten out, even 20-foot, but you're not doing, depends, depending on the size of the driveway. So that's the first prohibition with respect only to the MFPD units. The second thing, which I think we didn't notice, and I didn't hear anything about, was the additional tenants. I can rent a room to, I'm getting my third bedroom, I can rent it to somebody. And that was an additional prohibition that I requested, and I request that you address that issue. Please.
So you know what? He's bringing this up because with the high school nearby-
Right.
-only seniors get parking at the high school. So many times, once you are, once the high school kids are of driving age, they will seek to rent a spot from a local neighbor so that they can park their car there because they can't park at the high school.
The juniors.
So I think, the juniors, really. So I think that's what he's getting at.
So Mark Weingarten, on behalf of the applicant, firstly, with respect to the driveways, no one's allowed to park in the driveways. So we can't rent those out. Nobody can park in the driveways.
Technically, I guess if someone wanted to rent a spot in their garage, they could, and it wouldn't make a difference.
I guess in theory, you, I don't know how you would enforce or even know that that was happening.
Right.
But, and as far as on the street, these are open for use for the homeowners and for visitors. If anyone tried to rent them to someone, I don't know how they would do it. I don't know how they would reserve the spot for a particular individual, and more to the point, they would be in violation of your zoning code, because those are for use by the homeowners and their visitors. So I don't even know how you would regulate it.
I think they're taking just internal enforcement. If people started, people started parking there and walking to the school, the homeowners would be saying, what's going on here?
That's exactly right. Just as they would in the Whole Foods or they would in the Lifetime. If someone starts parking in your neighborhood who doesn't belong there-
Right.
-and I've lived in Old Farm Lake, you would know very quickly, and those people would be towed, frankly.
Right. And they know the kids that actually live in the Kupola Building, and they get to know the kids that live in the town homes, and when other kids start walking there, it raises a huge red flag.
So the zoning already exists, so that's your enforcement tool, and then it's up to the HOA and the residents to report that to either the, to the HOA or to the town building inspector?
Correct.
You want number seven? Yep. So condition nine talks about, yeah, I was on a, condition nine talks about the phasing plan should detail safe and convenient pedestrian access to the chat pack, because we want to make sure that that public space remains available during construction. That would be reviewed during site plan. Ten talks about Whipple Whirl Road. That was previously examined to see if they can improve site distance and traffic safety. There were studies that were done, there was some work that was done. The applicant has indicated that it's agreeable to continuing to cut back the vegetation overgrowth, so long as they have permission from DOT in the school district to do so, and that they shall monitor, and they'll do so periodically or upon request by the town's highway department. Number 11 regards the shuttle and sets forth that the agreement shall be signed by no later than December 31st and implement the electric shuttle by February 13th. Paragraph 12 just recognizes they need to get site plan approval. And paragraph 13 states, as subject to the planning board's review and confirmation, the applicant should relocate the end unit townhome on building U elsewhere in the East Village site plan to mitigate the visual impact upon the existing residents on Cowden Lane, and the board was provided, as part of the public record, with a revised master MFPD site plan that details the relocation of building U. And that's the one that the board would be approving tonight.
I wanted just, for the sake of the public, go back to the guesthouse. Just a few things. It's 30 days, inspection is required, and once those repairs, if any, are identified, for example, it has here active leaks or water infiltration, commence repairs at the language as forthwith. So that is relatively speaking immediately.
Yes.
The other issue was the $10,000 that the applicant reimbursed for a licensed architect and structural engineer, and that's been determined that that $10,000, up to $10,000 is an adequate number?
Yes. I believe discussions with Mr. Williams and-
I think so.
Yes. We believe that's a good faith number.
And then to that end, you had suggested a bond, but unfortunately, that's not something that's-
Correct. Well, doesn't permit us to do.
I just wanted to address that, because you spent the time making many suggestions.
So let me see then if the planning board has it. No, I was speaking so much, I didn't see it. You're legal now. So we have, and the board members have before them, the planning board's December 17, 2019 referral resolution. A draft courtesy copy was provided to the board members, if the board members are familiar with the contents of this memorandum. I would just ask, I don't see Sabrina here, but the planning board's attorney, Les Steinman, just to represent whether this materially is consistent with the prior draft or if there are any changes, modifications that should be brought to the board's attention.
Come, come.
Honestly, I just want someone else to speak.
As do we.
You set yourself up, right down the middle.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, boys. Sorry. Not to bang it.
So the planning board memo in paragraphs one, two, three, five, and six tracks the draft memo that you previously provided. There are some minor changes to paragraph four, so I could take you through that. So the start is, the beginning is the same with respect to paragraph 28 of the petition, the amendment to the boundary of the preliminary, of the multifamily plan development, MFPD district boundary, and the MFPD preliminary development concept plan, MFPD/DCP. This issue has been discussed by the planning board, particularly in relation to the plan changes in regards to, and this is new material, the increase in the building footprints and overall square footage. Now we go back to what was previously there, length of driveways, alleyways, roadways, raised alignment of the loop road, modifications to the dwelling unit, and then we added amount and balance of cut and fill, et cetera. The planning board has discussed these issues, and per, we added the word preliminary, per preliminary documentation regarding construction sequencing, phase balancing of cut and fill, and stormwater control. The planning board supports the requested changes, and then we made some changes here, subject to the potential impacts raised regarding stormwater control, construction sequence, landscaping, snow removal, cut and fill, et cetera. We added landscaping to that. Being addressed through the planning board's site plan approval to the board's and the town engineers' approval. And then we added this phrase, "As discussed with the town board at a joint meeting on December 3, 2019, the planning board notes the reservation of some of its members regarding the proposed length of driveways as not being suitable for traditional driveway functions." And otherwise, the memo is the same as previously provided to you.
By some? What was the number?
I think it was less than a majority.
Two percent. I think one?
No, I think it was two.
His members, plural.
So these, the memo and the changes described by Mr. Steinman are consistent with the board's resolution, doesn't require any modifications to either your finding statement or your resolution?
So just to go back to the resolution, the language that the planning board has regarding the stormwater control, construction sequence, landscaping, have we incorporated that into our petition to make sure that the planning board retains purview over that?
They have that absolute right under the site plan, so there's no need to set that forth. And they just wanted to make sure it was clear and everyone understood.
Those are just traditional elements of site plan.
So the public hearing is still open? Are you guys done? I'm sorry. Pick a list?
Yep.
Public hearing is still open? Any public comment? Any board memo, anything? So motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The board is ready via motion to entertain the resolution as read by the town attorney.
Okay, so moved.
Unless you want me to reread it.
No, no, file free.
So, and so just for clarity of record, the resolution is an omnibus resolution that first adopts a finding statement, then adopts the code amendments, and then approves the MFPD and the retail PDCP, all in one resolution.
Okay. You gonna do that?
No, it isn't a resolution, so if you've had your first and your second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Wait. Before we adjourn, I just want, since it is Rob and Holland's last meeting, we had a ceremony before this meeting, thanking them for their service, but I just wanted to say again, thank you to both of you, and you're leaving the town a much better place than when you came in, and we really appreciate all you've done for us.
Thank you.
And I want to say thank you to all the residents and to the town staff. It's been a general, it's been a wonderful honor to be able to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Likewise. I gave a long speech before, and it was all taped, so watch the tape.
Second.
It's been an honor to serve, really. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity.
And Laura, don't forget to mail my last check.
You know. Thank you.
You out to adjourn? Motion to adjourn?
You forgot to adjourn.
I did.
I thought I did.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All in favor?
Aye.